Like want to join us here, uh, si Pito Edo is here to serve. Uh, we'd like to welcome Sir Edo and Sir Mark, our good friends for serving here. I'm hoping River Maya might come up with a song about blockchain one day, uh, Mr. Escueta. But if there are other groups here who want to speak, you can occupy, uh, the seats here. This is a public hearing. And ano naman po, malayo tayong, uh, magsinata po dito. Just, um, approach the committee secretary so we can print your nameplate. Okay, so what are we doing today? So this is our second hearing. Nakapag first hearing na po tayo. We were able to do a DWG as well. Uh, the DWG, thank you to all of the people who joined the DWG. Napaka, uh, napakayaman po ng mga lubabasa DWG. And we now have, we now, I think everyone here has a copy of our latest version. So maybe I'll take a step back and share with you the legislative process. So ang ginagawa po natin ngayon ay mga hearing. Ang output dito ay committee report. So that's the Committee on Science and Technology Report, uh, which may be very different. And right now, as you can see, it's very different from what we filed. Um, so this report, we intend to sponsor on November twelfth. And if you wish to join, uh, uh, join us as we sponsor this bill, you're all very welcome. Just, uh, inform the secretariat. And, uh, I hope to sponsor this bill on November twelfth. On November twelfth, after the sponsorship, the period of interpolations will start. And other senators are now free to question different aspects of the bill. Um, and, uh, yun po 'yung napapanood po natin usually sa YouTube na nagtatanungan 'yung mga senador. Pagkatapos po niyan, ibubukas ang period of amendments. And other senators may choose to amend or choose to suggest revisions in our current draft. Uh, at that point, the chairman, which is myself, and the sponsor may choose to accept or not. No? Um, if we don't accept it, usually it's called to a vote, and the senators vote on the amendments. Uh, once that's done, then there's a third reading vote, a second reading vote, sorry, a second reading vote. And, uh, kapag napasa na on second reading, usually third reading is just, uh, ministerial after a few days, then that's the Senate version. As we're speaking, there's also a congressional, uh, counterpart that needs to also move. No? We have at least six versions in the House that were filed for this. And I also have been able to speak to the leadership of the House, and they seem interested, or at least, um, uh, supportive. No? Maybe I can say supportive with what we want from this bill. So, uh, timeline po nito is probably abot na tayo nito ng December or January. And, uh, honestly, if we're able to pass this first quarter of 2026, that's light speed. In terms of, uh, getting a bill passed, no? Tama na, Miss Denny. Mabilis po yun. But ako po, everybody here, everybody supporting the bill, we know the urgency of what we want to pursue. And ang goal po natin is that by 2026, the budget and all of the other government transactions, especially the transactions, kung saan natago 'yung trilyong piso na ninakaw sa atin, ay mabubulatlat na sa taong bayan. Nina para ngayon na nagugulat tayo, iniintay natin 'yung mga hearing bago mapanggit sino 'yung mga contractor, magkaano 'yung mga presyo, nasaan 'yung mga proyekto. By passing this bill, we are then mandating that all of this data is out there, even without asking for it. Kahit hindi natatanungin, di na ire-request sa DPWH 'yung mga kontrata at 'yung mga proyekto, automatically ilalabas na siya. And many groups here, like, uh, People's Budget Coalition, Insight Gov, and so many groups here and those that are watching us, alam nila na ang pinakamahalaga ay open to the public ang mga dokumentong ito. No? So, uh, that's the timeline. Once Congress passes their own version, it'll go into a bycome. And in the bycome, that's also another opportunity where, uh, provisions may get amended or changed. No? So ang point ko lang is that there's at least three or four more steps, uh, before the bill is finalized. And every step of the way, may opportunity to improve the bill. Of course, meron ring threat to defeat the bill. And somebody might insert a self-defeating provision or a provision that might create delay. Uh, kaya binabantayan po namin 'yung mga provisions that might create delay in terms of implementing, uh, the bill or implementing the law when it becomes a law. So if you notice, as much as we opened up to many suggestions with regard to proper usage of terms and technologies, we have tried to keep it as simple as possible. Para wala tayong reason na made delay 'yung paggawa nitong batas na ito kapag batas na siya. And, uh, everything you add, uh, in fact, there was a suggestion, I think it was from Ann, about, um, uh, information, uh, literacy campaign, uh, regarding, um, the bill. Uh, sorry, from Bitskuela. Bitskuela is over there. We took it out. Kasi baka sabihin nila, we can't implement kung wala pa tayong information dissemination campaign. So tinanggal namin. Uh, there were other suggestions about this and that. We tried to keep it as simple as possible so that there will, there won't be any obstacles to implementation. Um, and siyempre, bilang mga lislador, alam rin po namin ano 'yung mga provision na ginagamit para magkaroon ng delay. So tinanggal po natin yan. And that's our years of experience in legislation, uh, that, uh, that's going to go there, no? So hopefully, we can all come together. And again, there are many, many more steps before this is done. And kung may maisip po kayong bago na baka magandang ma-refine natin 'yung mga words or may salita na baka ma-misunderstand, baka pwede nating i-define na mas maganda. Marami pa tayong steps. So hindi naman po siya 'yung tipo na, uh, finish or not finish, uh, pass your papers, no? Matagal pa yun. That's actually the bycome. So hanggang sa bycome, may opportunity pa tayo to improve this further. But habang nag-iimprove tayo, binabantayan rin natin ano 'yung mga posibleng iligay dyan na makapagtitigil dun sa batas or makapagpepreno dun sa ating hinahanap na momentum, no? Para sa transparency. Um, for, for those here who've been working with us for some time, makita niyo naman 'yung version na ito. Uh, the most important part is really phase one. No? Uh, phase one basically mandates that all of the documents in section five that we have, uh, detailed needs to be out and, um, posted and published by the government agencies. Yun 'yung pinakamahalaga. Because once you have that, and it's interoperable, it's structured. Na-memorize ko na po 'yung mga suggestions po niyo. Interoperable, digitally structured, verifiable, with, uh, verifiable timestamps. And, and we have the wording correct. Kapag yun po, nailabas na ng DPWH, DEP Ed, DOH, and you know, the, the top agencies, uh, then I think, you know, a majority of our work is actually done. Because the watchdog groups, the academe, the different groups, kapag 'yung data na yan interoperable na pwede ng magagamit yan for further analysis, pwede ng magamit yan para mailabas talaga 'yung katotohanan sa mga kontratang ito. 'Yung phase two and phase three, uh, of course, is trying to put it in a more secure, um, in a more secure way. And, uh, you know, it was debated in the DWG, is it gonna be blockchain, is it gonna be other technologies? Honestly, ang goal lang namin is secured 'yung data na ito. And we are pushing for decentralization because a decentralized, um, uh, decentralized mechanism will mean it's more secure also, rather than a centralized mechanism. All of that, kung ano 'yung mismong technology, kasi there have been a lot of talk about, baka may napili na daw ng mga vendors na gagawa nito. Lahat po yan, iniwan po namin yan sa implementor. That's not up to us. That's not up to the law. That's up to the implementors. But even during the implementation phase, and the ICT will have a big role, of course, uh, Asek, Miggy, and, uh, Yusek, Dave are here. Babantayan rin natin yan. And we will make sure that that process is very transparent and that we will allow real groups to really bid for it. In fact, I'm posing the challenge now. Kung may mga grupo po dito who want to see this through, why don't you bid for it at zero cost? Uh, we've got different groups here. Some are private sector, some are academies, some are NGOs. Bid for it at zero cost, kung yun ang concern ng mga raming tao. No? I know that, uh, we've also been working with groups like SGV, you know, groups who have a lot of resources also. Come together, let's do this. Baka pwede natin itong gawin. Citizens, action talaga. Why not? Napakatalino po ng mga tao na nandito. No? Maybe that's something we can look forward to. But that will happen much, much, much later on. After the law is passed, after the IRR is made, dun pa lang po gagawin yan, no? Kung sino ba talaga 'yung grupo. That's phase two and phase three. And if you look at the timeline in the current version, that's within two years and within three years. But what we want to see within 2026 is really phase one, which is all of the documents that are detailed in section five, and you know, People's Budget Coalition supported us with the different listing. DBM supported us with a different listing of documents, uh, na lahat yan available na sa publiko by next year. If we're able to get this passed by the first quarter of 2026, sa timeline po natin na phase one, lahat ng mga data na yan, mga dokumentong yan should be available to the public already, even before the end of 2026. At ang nilagay po natin, and I'm sure marami n'yon nagulat, narinig ko dun during the DWG, nagalagay po tayo ng mga penalty. Kung may mga dokumento na hindi po napublish ng ahensya sa kanilang website, and I'm talking about phase one, within the time allotted, which I think if I'm not mistaken, it's now at seven days, no? At seven days, the responsible officer will be penalized administratively. If after thirty days, if after thirty days, hindi pa napopost 'yung kontrata, 'yung bill of materials, kung sino 'yung nagwaging contractor, it then becomes a criminal offense. And this is the first time in our history na maglalagay tayo ng criminal offense sa mga hindi magce-share ng data na nakalagay sa ating batas. If found that what was hidden na kontrata is fraudulent, then the responsible officer for sharing that data can be charged as a co-conspirator of the groups who are involved in the fraudulent activity. Mabigat po yan. Mabigat po yan. And I know that many government workers gusto rin po nila gawin 'yung tama. Gusto rin po nila gawin 'yung hinahanap ng taong bayan na malinis na gobyerno. And I know that many of these government workers, um, 'yung mga direktor level at 'yung mga responsable po sa mga ganitong, uh, klasing mga transaksyon, many of them want to do the right thing. And I'm sure, even though it might be difficult in the beginning, kasi, you know, added work po yan, ang hinahanap ng taong bayan, mailabas natin 'yung mga kontratang yan, mailabas natin 'yung mga bill of materials na yan para makita ng taong bayan. We also put, since nakikita ko si Yusek Dave, talagang nakapoko sa akin. We also put in the bill that, uh, Cadena can be integrated with the EGOV app. Um, and, uh, maybe we could just have one portal for all of government, no? Which is, uh, one of the goals of the ICT. Na ito, mga datos na ito, mahahanap mo rin siya sa mga app na currently ginagawa na ng gobyerno. We don't want to recreate, uh, reinvent the wheel. There are many different initiatives already, uh, from EGOV to Field Japs and all of that. But ito pong gusto natin na mailabas 'yung, uh, kung saan ginagamit ang pera ng bayan, yan po 'yung pinaka-primary na nais po natin makita. So that's just an overview for everyone today. I hope we're all on the same page. Uh, for today, I will ask Jose, our, uh, legislative staff officer, who's the one directly handling the bill, to go through every part, no? So nung last time po kasi, last hearing natin, overview talaga siya eh. We requested everyone to talk about the benefits of a secure platform, the benefits of having data out there. Uh, and I'd like to thank all of the resource speakers from the, from the last hearing. But today, we're gonna go a little technical. We're gonna go per part, uh, and then every part, we're going to open the floor for discussion. We'll limit it to about five minutes. So ano po to, unahan, okay? 'Yung pinaka merong gustong sabihin, just raise your hand. We will call you for every part. It's not really provision by provision or line by line. It's part by part, no? So we're going to chunk it into different salient points. Magsasilata po tayo for about five minutes, five to ten minutes. Kung meron pa kayong gustong ibanggit, we can accept it in paper later on, no? Uh, there might be some parts which are more interesting than others, so baka, uh, hahabaan po natin ng konti 'yung oras. But, uh, we're gonna do that, and I hope to finish by twelve, okay? So we'll hope to finish by noon time. Last time, nag-overtime tayo ng mga forty-five minutes, no? So this time, we'll try to finish by twelve. But don't worry, kung hindi po kayo nakapag sila tasa mic, we can accept your suggestions on paper. And as you've seen, we've been trying our best to really accommodate all of the suggestions from all of the experts, okay? So I'm gonna pass the floor to Jose, and, um, uh, I'll manage the, um, the, uh, back and forth for the Q and A. Jose.
Alright, good morning, everyone. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank everyone for their contribution in the crafting of this latest version of the bill. Um, it's, it's been a long journey for me at least, since we first filed back in September. And, uh, and I think this is reflected in how different and improved the current version of the bill is. So without, uh, next slide please. Today, I would like, uh, next slide. Today, I would like to introduce to you the Cadena Act. The objective of this presentation is to give a view of the latest version of the bill, which is very much different from the first filing version. So what does Cadena stand for? It stands for Citizen Access and Disclosure of Expenditures for National Accountability. This, this bill represents, this bill represents a landmark step in our country's push for open government. It mandates that all transactions involving public funds are recorded in a secure, verifiable, and publicly accessible platform. So, yeah. So for this section, section two, the, uh, Declaration of Policy, uh, this section outlines the guiding philosophy of the law. That transparency and accountability are cornerstones of democracy. Cadena oper- operationalizes these values through technology. It institutionalizes honesty in governance by requiring that all budget documents be made publicly available. In other words, transparency will no longer depend, able by design. Later, who and what this act, uh, programs, I think it's also good to mention.
Wait, wait, ah, hindi naman.
Carry. So one of the days from their approval, issue of the documents that we now refer to. Uh, letter B. Other fund release works, bill of quantities, detailed unit price analysis, records of competing bids, inspection and acceptance reports, disclosures, certifications of good standing, and financial accountability forms.
Sino 'yung mga nagbid? Magkaano 'yung naawards sa kanila? Magkaano 'yung mga kontrata? Saan? Magkaano 'yung mga sementong gagamitin nila? 'Yung bakal na alam nating overpriced by anywhere from thirty to a hundred percent? Nakikita natin sino 'yung mga nagcompet na baka mga dami rin lang o mga pare-parehas lang na mga kompanya? And even up to the progress billing, uh, during the, the, uh, privileged speech of Senator Laxson, they were able to uncover that the progress billing of some of these flood control projects nabigay na one hundred percent. Meaning considered completed na siya, kahit wala pa talagang nagagawa. Can you imagine if now all of that data will be available to the public? Kung makita ng, kahit sinong mamama yan, 'yung data na yan, makikita nila zero, thirty, fifty, one hundred percent? And if, and those reports have corresponding pictures. And if our watchdogs here can connect to satellite technology, you can even verify it on your own. I think yesterday or the other day, DPWH had, uh, co-assigning with the Philippine Space Agency for that, um, for that purpose. So all of this will be out there for the public to see. Now, 'yung isang concern ng mga grupo initially was, what about garbage in, garbage out? Eh, kung nagsisinungaling naman 'yung report, well, kung nagsisinungaling kayo, pwede kayo makulong. That's the answer to that. Kung nagsisinungaling kayo, kung maglalagay kayo dito ng garbage in or 'yung maling data, pwede kayo makulong. And later on, we look at, um, uh, section seventeen or sixteen about penalties. Makikita natin na mabigat 'yung mga penalty for the agencies and the officers who are putting in fraudulent data. So before I move on, may I ask our government watchdogs, uh, like BBC, maybe Insight Gov, uh, DBM? It, it, tama naman 'yung mga nakalagay na dokumento dito, di ba? Meron pa bang kulang? Meron ba kaming na-miss out na mga dokumento na dapat nakalagay rin dito? Yes, um, Ms. Pakalna?
Good morning, Mr. Chair and to everyone present. Um, as to the itemized, um, doc, type of documents, uh, on the draft, tama naman ito, Mr. Chair. Although under item C, Budget Execution and Fund Release Documents, we respectfully suggest for the committee to consider including the national budget circular we release on the guidelines, um, on the release of funds, uh, for the current fiscal year. This will provide a lighthouse and understanding to the public kung paano nire-release 'yung funds after the General Appropriations Act is, uh, passed or enacted. So that is also an important document that will provide, um, information to the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Yun lang? Mayroon ka bang gusto itagag or hangga dun muna?
At this juncture, yun po, whatever, Sir Chair. Thank you.
Okay, salamat. Um, AJ, you have anything else to add here? We got the initial list from BBC actually, so you may want to talk about this section.
Yes, Mr. Chair. Um, maraming salamat po. I think the listed documents are, are correct. Um, I think it's a good start, but we're realizing that as we're compiling our documents, that marami pang ibang, uh, na may miss out. So we're hoping that there's also a catch-all provision, uh, um, any other documents. I'm not sure if it has to be in this bill or if we would like to pursue a different, uh, Freedom of Information and Full Disclosure Bill.
No, it's here. Um, we have other, yeah, we have section F, no, other documents. Uh, in fact, the council that will be formed, co-chaired by DBM and the ICT, can also mandate further documents, uh, in the future. But, uh, again, kung hindi kasi nakalagay sa batas, it's better to really put it, no? So kung meron kayong maisip pa, magandang marase niyo na niyo para malagay natin siya. Kasi 'yung mga others to follow, mga, that, that's usually not good legislation. It's better to be very specific.
Uh, sige po. I have some, several points pa po. Um, some comments. Uh, could we integrate possibly the idea of, um, having the identification system? Like the UX code, the PRIXI codes as part of, uh, this provision or another provision?
Um, yes, we can include that. Yeah. We will, we mentioned UX naman talaga. But to, parang the legend, 'yung what, the UX and what it exactly means, no?
Yes.
Yeah, I think DBM, that's publicly available data naman, no? Ms. Pakalna, di ba? 'Yung UX, no?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
And does that change or nagbabago ba 'yung UX or that's it na, di ba?
May divisions kapag may, um, yes.
May bagong items?
Yes, which, uh, is decided by the DBM, the COA, uh, together with the DOF.
Okay, so the legend of UX, no? Okay. Kung ano 'yung ibig sabihin niya, we can include them.
Um, because we noticed, Mr. Chair, thank you, um, it might not necessarily be interoperable with other data, um, standards like the PSGC that the, uh, Philippine Statistics Authority uses, 'yung Philippine Standard Geographic Code. So what we noticed, for example, iba 'yung coding with the, with the UX, pag-regional or provincial sa PSGC na ginagamit ng PSA. So we might want to think about how to make this all interoperable.
Yes, um, yun ang sakit ng, ng ulo ni Yusek Dave, actually. Yung, uh, magkakaibang, tama ba Yusek Dave? 'Yung magkakaibang mga terminologies ng iba't ibang ahensya. Uh, but EGOV is trying to, to consolidate that, right?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, actually, uh, since, uh, we already passed the, the E-Governance Act, uh, part of the, that act is to allow the ICT to implement standardization, including to our terms and, uh, and, uh, uh, descriptions later on, the mga technicalities, uh, Mr. Chair.
So that, that law is already working on that?
Yes.
Okay. So by the way, uh, let me just also explain, uh, the scope of the bill is really for full disclosure of documents and to secure these documents, no? Um, there are other laws that are trying to computerize and digitalize our government system. I think the EGOV Act was, was that law. There are other laws also that, um, tackle other parts of the government. Um, but a law is best when it's really very clear in its scope. So ito, ito 'yung conversation ko with, uh, Sek Henry and, uh, Yusek Dave. Na my, my goals ang the ICT, my goals ang EGOV, my goals ang gobyerno sa efficiency, maybe DBM and DOF are, are part of that. What we're trying to focus on is just one part of that larger goal. But this is the part that is the most important when it comes to fighting corruption, okay? So we're not trying to do everything, okay? We're not trying to digitalize government because there are other groups and other laws that are already trying to do that. What we're trying to do is to make transparent all of the documents needed, so the people know where their money is going and to secure that further. Yun 'yung goal ng bill natin, no? So, uh, yes, so AJ, yes, importante yan. And yes, another law is doing that already. Um, and yes, we will talk about UX in the bill, but, uh, forcing them to consolidate, I think is beyond the scope of this particular bill. But if we need a, a law on that, no, EGOV is already there, no? Yan, yun 'yung nakalagay sa EGOV, di ba? No, Yusek Dave? Yes, so may batas na para dyan. Anything else?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I think one last point on this, uh, section of the bill. Um, when we looked at the data on, um, the procurement system, awarded contracts, our estimate is that awarded contracts only accounts for about twenty to thirty percent of the GA. And, uh, the ABC data, um, is about only fifty to sixty percent. So may malaki pang part ng GA, uh, that is not covered by the procurement system. So for example, salaries and allowances of personnel, uh, mga pension, mga debt servicing, mga automatic appropriations, uh, mga non-procured items, and even Ayuda, for example, 'yung mga soft programs. That's why we've been advocating for opening the Ayuda lists as well. Um, so we hope that that can also be accounted for, uh, in this kind of measure.
So yes, I, I do intend to include the Ayuda lists here. Because, uh, eventually with EGOV and with the national ID system, we should be sure na lahat ng binibigyan ng Ayuda at scholarship ay totoong tao. And I think, uh, our push for transparency, because we're spending hundreds of billions in our dole-out programs, uh, correct, DBM, no? Ahabot ng one hundred billion yan, pag-iatmo lahat ng mga dole-out programs. Mahalaga na makita natin na totoong tao talaga at totoong nangangailangan ang mga pinagbibigyan ng mga iba't ibang, uh, Ayuda ng gobyerno. So, um, so yes, let us include that here. Uh, the DBM documents will already include the debt servicing, kasi that's already part of the budget, no? Um, kasama na siya. But, but yes, I do agree that, uh, we should have, if we need to be more explicit about it, we should have it here. 'Yung salaries, uh, I'm okay also with it. Siguro lang, uh, we just have to look at data privacy. Because we're looking at, uh, specific individuals already. Um, we, we also put a provision here that we have to be, um, in line with, uh, the current DPS, no? Uh, the current, uh, Data Privacy Act. So nothing in the law should contravene the Data Privacy Act. But, but yes, I agree that even if it's, um, um, I guess, okay lang naman. Uh, can I find out, let me solicit some support here from the government agencies. 'Yung mga listahan ng mga binibigyan, kunyari, scholar, scholarship, di ba? Is that publicly, that should be public data already, right? Tama, di ba? Kapag nabibiyak ka ng tulo ng gobyerno, does that become public data? Anybody have an answer to that? Or is there any data privacy concerns? Sa mga lawyers natin, may mga ano ba kayo dyan? Data, any data privacy experts here? Anyway, we'll look into that if that's contravening the Data Privacy Act. Okay, so, uh, may phone na friend ako dito na pwede magdata minimiz- minimization with regard to addresses names. But ako, for me, personally, if you're getting support from government, uh, I think your name then becomes publicly available data, no? We will check that. But, but thank you for that suggestion. We'll consider that. We have been requesting. Ah, okay. Ah, yes, so we have been requesting BBC for the updated list, so you can sapit na talang. Are you, uh, finished, AJ? Thank you. Yes, Asek?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to rejoin dyan lang po, dito sa question po ni AJ regarding po dito sa, uh, like for example, 'yung names po ng mga scholars, uh, awardees natin. I know for a fact sa DOST, 'yung mga scholars, they publish 'yung mga names sa mga, mga awardees for that particular year. But for the listahanan, I believe there was a request before from the SWD to publish na. Uh, we were there trying to reconcile na kung sino ba talaga 'yung nabibigyan due to pandemic. And I think they didn't push through with the publication because of, uh, sensitive information. Like for example, um, 'yung mga families na, uh, nakakatanggap ng Ayuda, of course, they don't want to be like Sabina, tumatanggap sa Ayuda from the government. This is my social status. So, uh, hindi po na publicly available. But you can request actually from the SWD, uh, verify 'yung mga, uh, recipients and also sa mga LGs. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I guess we'll have to tackle that, um, in relation to the Data Privacy Act also. Um, but thank you for the suggestion. We'll try to include that. Uh sige, we'll have Ann, and then Paul, and then si uh Sir Totti, Prof Totti, and then si Prof Adrian. But let's keep it short.
Yeah. Mister Chair, good morning. Uh to the point of AJ Montessa, we've actually uh added additional language to that. Um disclosures shall include linkage identifiers or references sufficient to trace each appropriation, obligation, and disbursement. And this is for the agencies to ensure, that shall ensure that budget cycle datasets are interlinked and reconcilable. To your point, Mister Chair, a while ago, allowing citizens to trace the full flow of funds from authorization to actual expenditure and results achieved. So we'll just uh send that to Sir Jose.
Thank you, Ann. Salamat. Paul?
Uh Mister Chair, uh since we're talking about automation, I think everything here is more of uh like, you know, there are policies there. We would want to see also a, you know, uh every every public document should be on the source code. Since we're open sourcing the source code, we want that, like, you know, as we maintain it in the IRR. But technically, there should be some provision there, like what we call smart contract, that, you know, we should put every public document that was decided already. So so people can see that uh kung may kulang pa o wala, na nasubmit.
Hanga tracker? Okay. Um yeah, uh sige. We'll consider if we need to put that in the law or sa implementation na lang yan. Maybe sa IRR na lang. Thank you, Paul. Uh Prof Totti?
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Uh in Section Five, when you have all those documents, you're talking about tons of information. I would like to speak for a behalf of the non-ID literate. It would be very difficult for them to navigate and looking for where these documents are connected to. So maybe we would insert the term ease of naviga- ease of navigation or ease of navigability. Para kasi some of the government websites and web portals are not easy to look around, not easy to search. So for the for a non-ID literate, you know, for them to, since it's a citizen access. Re- require or mandate all government web portals to be, to have ease of navigation. To 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 find out where to look for this data that they're looking for, 'yung mga tabs and all of that. Thank you, Mister Chair.
Thank you, Prof. So uh so yes, we can include the language, but siempre, the the devil is in the details. That's already in the implementation, no? And uh Yusek Dave and I and uh Sek Henry actually had some discussions about the UI. It's not yet here. Matagal pa yan, IRR pa yan, tsaka implementation. But maybe Yusek Dave, you can share a few words.
I totally agree, uh Mister Chair and Sir. And and I I discussed this during our last uh uh technical working group meeting. Where we need to focus on what the people can understand, you know? Sometimes if we're so technical, I think we're going to confuse the non-techie Filipinos, no? So part of the discussion, Mister Chair, uh during the last meeting, uh just to repeat, is to come up with a very historical mode. So it's a story to tell. So from the putting of the of the date na sa GA, you know that this is how much na award. Sinong pinag-award na, sinong contractor, anong nangyari doon, umalpak na ba, delayed na ba, natapos na ba? Sinong naglagay ng completed, sinong nag-imbestigahan na hindi completed? Si COA pag nagpasok, si DPWH pag nagpasok. So it's historical mode. So sa mata ng tao, napakasimple sa kanya. So mula doon sa simula hanggang doon sa nangyayari. So meron siyang historical na mangyayari. So we will, we will really focus on that, sir, on the UI side. So that the user, ano, interface will be so easy to understand and, ano, and navigate by uh by the Filipino people.
Uh thank you, Yusek. I understand previously, uh in the past, the ICT, they used to have a template for websites for all government agencies. Is that still in effect? A certain standard template for all government uh websites. Is that still in effect?
There was an old one, uh Mister Chair, but so complicated as well. And there's a new one now that we currently implemented called the E-Web Builder. This is a new, if you navigate the V I R dot gov dot B H. B I C D dot gov dot B H, C F O dot C O T F S, isa na po 'yung itsura niya. Isa na 'yung itsura niya. Dati kasi ano eh, parang everyone would like to have their own uh uh looks of a website na mahirap gamitin. So we're focusing on the UI UX uh module, so that when people will will browse into it.
It's a safe.
We have a new one, sir.
So it's a safe. Whatever government agency they go through, they know the the features.
Yeah, uh Prof, just uh acknowledge Chair, please.
Sorry, Mister Prof.
Sorry, that's really how it goes here. So Yusek, thank you. Uh Prof, you have another other question? Yes, sige. Um so this is uh definitely this is something important, but it's really not right right now. Kasi mahaba-haba pa 'tong prosesong to. Hopefully by next year. But I hope that this group that's been really actively working on this will also help us with the UI and the UX, no? I think uh the ICT, who if you notice in the law, has been tasked with really shepherding this. Uh I hope that they will continue having their doors open to all of us to really go up to the implementation phase, no? Um uh by the way, one 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 thing I'm actually imagining, uh Prof Totti, is not just um uh looking at the website. But really looking at um how citizens can can help analyze this data through our AI. And uh chat assistants, no? Our our AI assistants or AR, um what do you call that? Our uh uh agents, no? Our AI agents. So. Once the data, and again, we're careful with the language, structured, open source, all of this, di ba? Then once it's uploaded, uh you can ask the help of AI to help you analyze this data. Even go as far as saying, you know, I'm from uh Bandayan Island, Cebu, how many classrooms are being built there this year? And that should come out, no? The data should be there. How many were completed? How much was the cost? How much was the, ma-kano 'yung cemento na ginamit sa classroom dito sa aking barangay? That data should be available if we do our job right. No? Tama, I'm correct, no? Asek may kikirek, di ba? So if 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 we do the job correctly and the data is uh correctly uploaded with the the proper uh. The proper characteristics, then that's something I think that we can look forward to. So actually, Prof, what I imagine is less people going on the website, more people asking their uh AI agents regarding the budget, no? And comparing commercial data uh with the data that's already uh online because of this app. Anything else, Prof Totti? Sige, uh Prof Adrian, uh and then si Miss Malu, last point. Um uh let's go to another section already now.
Mister Chair, um balikan ko lang 'yung mga requested documents. Maybe request na isamang engineering design for the infrastructure para at least.
Thank you. Uh Miss Malu, Miss Mary Lou?
Your Honor, Mister Chair, um we support AJ's uh proposal on Ayuda. Pero baka mas madali talaga kung 'yung Ayuda wala sa unprogrammed at ipasok dun sa regular programs ng agencies. Ang hirap talaga it trace. Yung kung wala sa unprogrammed, 'yung mga hahanaping fondo, so.
Uh DBM, uh Miss Pakalna, right now in twenty twenty six, it's not in the unprogrammed, right? It's in the program. It's in the GAA, right? Ang lahat ng Ayuda, uh extubad lahat ng ano?
Uh yes, Mister Chair.
Was it in the unprogrammed in previous years? Sige, Asek Sarmiento, since she is shaking her head.
Mister Chair, I think it's always in the program.
Oh, Miss Mary Lou, uh my understanding is that it's in the program. Meron bang Ayuda na? Are you aware of uh any dole-out program that was in the unprogrammed?
I'm I'm coming from our experience of monitoring the twenty twenty six current GA na hindi namin matrace. Kasi PDF 'yung hawak na very short. So it's just too.
Well, okay.
Too for to check kung kung talagang hindi 'yan pumasok sa unprogrammed.
It's in the program. It's not in the unprogrammed. It's there, but you're correct. Kung PDF, it's very difficult to to trace. And that's what we're trying to fix, no? That uh all these documents will be searchable and uh you can analyze them. Uh yes, AJ?
Uh thank you, Mister Chair. On the note of unprogrammed, uh what we noticed in the NEP and the GA, the program part. They all are, for example, the Ayuda programs are complete with codes, UX codes, PRIXI codes, um and then the distribution. But when it comes to the unprogrammed, uh there are catch-all um provisions. For example, support for infrastructure projects and social programs that eventually in the um status of allotment releases. The PDF report that they're saying ma-identify 'yung agency. So for example, some of these programs na pupunta sa DSWD, sa DEEPED. But then nawawala 'yung uh line item na nandun. So when it comes to unprogrammed, hindi talaga pinapakita 'yung line itemization. That's why it's an an issue for us also that the unprogrammed funds have to be uh really disaggregated.
Do we do we need further language to talk about the unprogrammed funds here in Section Five?
Um I think I think one of the budget documents that are here is the status of allotment releases. Um that's where you would see the the.
All of the lahat ng paglabas ng pera?
Yes.
And that would include even the unprogrammed, because the UX would say unprogrammed.
The the problem is the current uh SARs or the SARs don't show that these are coming from unprogrammed. So makita mo 'yung statme- uh state uh 'yung allotment release, pero hindi mo na nalaman na galing pala siya sa unprogrammed. It just looks like a regular line item na finaan.
But di ba in all of the SARO, um Miss Pakalna, are you Director Pakalna, Asek Pakalna?
Uh no, Mister Chair.
Miss Pakalna?
Yes.
Okay. Uh hindi ba lahat ng SARO merong 'yung source? Nakalagay dun 'yung source?
Yes, Mister Chair.
Oh, so sa mga ganyang SARO, ano 'yung source na niirelagay nila?
So yun nga po 'yung mahirap, Mister Chair. Parang when we looked at it, um there are certain programs. Hindi namin nalaman na galing pala sa unprogrammed ito. So we're not sure exactly what, walang source po, Mister Chair, basically.
In the document, blank?
In the document, it doesn't say. It just shows, for example, for example, ang nakita namin ay um for the eight-point socio-economic agenda. Because that's one of the catch-all provisions of the unprogrammed appropriations. But if you didn't read that special provision of the UA, you wouldn't know that that specific uh allotment release is linked to the UA.
Let me reverse the question. With our current language, will will that concern be covered by our current language? Or do we need to change our language to cover that concern? Pwede mo ng pagisipan, ito ang answer right now. Pero let's cover that concern with Section Five. Let's find language that will cover that. And baka Miss Pakalna can help us also, no? Um so meron siyang source. It's just that the source is so generic. A zero, wala source, blanco. So may SARO na walang source. Pwede ba yun? Uh Miss Pakalna? Or ngayon, hindi na pwede, di ba? Sige.
Um since I do not fully understand the circumstances of the situation that we're describing.
So they're talking about SARO. Di ba lahat ng SARO uh nakalagay ko na 'yung source?
Yes.
Right? But they're saying that there are some SARO na blanco. And this is not for twenty twenty six. This is for previous, kasi SARO na siya, di ba? So we want to avoid that. In fact, that's something that shouldn't be allowed, honestly, no? So ang tanong ko is does the current language of Section Five, lahat matitrace, di ba? Everything here is connected. I think Yusek Dave, I'm not sure what word he used earlier. Everything is connected, 'yung uh is it traceability or?
Mister Chair, actually, this is the one that we've been discussing uh once it's already on notes. There's a way that uh it could be uh, ano na, it could be changed or altered. So once they entered once, it will be seen by everyone. So andun na po 'yung traceability immediately, uh Mister Chair.
And and all fields need to be completed. Di ka pwede magblanco?
That's why, Mister Chair, bawal po 'yung ina-upload lang 'yung data, no? Kapag pinasok po ni DBM dun sa ano, 'yung sa GA, example, at nakalagay ko ng source doon, kita na po lahat nun.
And pag iba-blanco, di yun papayagan?
Di papayagan po, kasi po 'yung data field po is required. So there's no such thing po na pwede mong lagyan po ng empty information. Kailangan may laman po yun.
Okay. So does the language currently address that? Does our language currently address that?
Actually, Mister Chair, kaya nga po, for the simplicity, uh basa everything technical po siguro, Mister Chair, my humble suggestion, Mister Chair. Idiscuss po 'yan sa IRR para po mas maganda. Kasi po, if we're gonna add add po 'yung mga technicalities description po sa sa bill. Baka po magtatagal po talaga 'yung ano. So I think anything about technicalities po, siguro, baka pwede sa IRR na po natin po ang pag-usapan, Mister Chair. Mas simple po.
Sige, thank you, Ann. And then, sorry, Doctor, sige, I'll allow Doctor Al to speak also. Yes, Ann?
Yeah. So Mister Chair, dun sa kung nasa language, main reason why I uh altered kanina yung. The full flow of funds from authorization to actual expenditure. Dun po makikita 'yung source up to the time na may spend 'yung budget. So it will cover, the language should cover, the entire budget cycle uh.
Okay.
From the full flow.
Thank you, Ann. Uh Doctor Villarika?
Yes, I I was just, uh Mister Chair, um I was just commenting on the fact that Ann mentioned kanina. That if all the documents could be kind of like hyperlinked to each other, then if you had a SARO there. That was that was missing a source of funds, you can just track track which map that came from and then you can basically uh find out how that. So it's, I think it's with the suggestion from from Ann, it should be possible to trace all of that stuff. If you can make sure that every single document is kind of like hyperlinked to all the other documents.
Yeah, we'll just look for the language to describe that, no? Yeah, okay. Sige, anything else for Section Five? Um sige, quickly na lang, sige, let's go like this. Attorney Mark and then si Ma'am. Uh our our friend from uh uh Miss Makapagal and then Prof Adrian. I'm running time because Section Five is really important, so.
Yeah.
Sige, Attorney Mark, go ahead.
Mister Chair, uh quickly lang, Mister Chair, baka kasi we'll miss it. We'll probably just have to check further the the last paragraph of Section Five on the disclosure exceptions. Uh we have to revisit lang the language there. Uh usually, kasi Mister Chair, as when we draft um this loss. Uh data privacy, the the reference of the Data Privacy Act uh may be used to shield, no? Could be misuse to hide project beneficiaries, supplier names, or fund flows. So siguro, Mister Chair, um not to go to details, it's uh sometimes it's overbroad. They will use the Na- the Data Privacy Act as reference. So I'd like to clarify lang, of course, Mister Chair, that as we all would want. Public spending and contract data are not personal data. And uh let's probably limit exceptions strictly to national security. I would also want to reinforce the principle that public money is public data. So siguro to your point earlier, Mister Chair, uh we could like ask for uh for help from the data privacy experts on. Make sure that this will not be used as a shield to defeat our objectives here.
Uh thank you. We'll take note of that, no? Okay, yes, uh Miss Makapagal?
Yes, Mister Chair, very quickly, since we're talking about unprogrammed funds, source of funds. And the cadena meaning citizen access and disclosure of expenditures for national accountability. I am wondering, 'yung mga donation po tuwing tuwing bagyo, tuwing like kundor, nagaling po sa ibang bansa, like Japan or America. San po yun napupunta and san po yun nilalagay? And how do we track that? Because it's my, it's been my wish po since I started blockchain twenties, I started into blockchain twenty seventeen. Gusto ko po saan ang makita yun, kasi I saw with my personal eyes na may mga donations na pinaweh after mag-picture taking. So I want to know kung san po yun manggagaling at san mapupunta at sinong tumatanggap.
Good point. And that's not cover- covered, no? It's not. Sige, we can cover that. Uh DBM or the DOF? Meron bang ano, is there a a log of all of those donations?
So sir, sa ano po, uh Mister Chair, for the donation po, normally po kasi, uh step one po niyan is uh. Natalim po dito yan sa Philippines, 'yung um mga goods na idonate sa atin. So may process po yan sa, uh 'yung recipient po will have to apply for. Uh 'yung mag uh 'yung magdonate po sa atin, will have to apply for uh importation, um attack for tax exemption. For importation of these items. So DOF has a log of all those coming in uh in na naimport na mga uh donated goods. But as to 'yung sa, kung actually na distributed, na distributed po sa agency. O kasi po, New Zealand, we don't have that. Only the logs of the imported items.
Well, um considering that we have a reference to source and uh we're talking about expenditure, that's also a source, di ba? So uh we also have reference to PPPs and uh foreign foreign projects. Maybe we could include um donations, I guess. Yes, uh Miss Makapagal?
Very quickly lang, sir, if I may add, please tell Chris Akina that I miss her. Dahil pagka may bagyo the next day po, nag-aanga na siya, nag-aasta po siya ng donation. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Prof Adrian?
Yes, Mister Chair, as siguro, it's more of a point of inquiry. Kung totoo ba na pag 'yung isang uh unprogrammed funds na infrastructure project, hindi na kailangan ng mga upstream documents? Like uh so hindi ko hinalam kung, for example, we're asking for engineering design. Um do we, we have the impression na pag unprogrammed 'yung funds?
No.
Hindi kailangan isubmit?
No, eh eh the the proper process is everything needs to have all of that paperwork, whether the source is unprogrammed or GAA or donation. Lahat 'yan kailangan ng tamang paperwork. And the fact that they're not able to produce the right paperwork or uh maraming shortcut. Or naditim completed kahit ipanagagawa or nagsisimulan na, kahit wala pa 'yung program of work. These are all manifestations of illegal behavior. And you can, you can sort of surmise that if projects were done without the necessary paperwork, they were probably done in haste. And probably done because somebody is stealing, no? Um am I correct, Asek Sarmiento? Correct, di ba?
That's correct, Mister Chair.
Yeah. So by the way, DPWH um in the last hearing said that they would try to. so I, I, I read to them the initial list of uh, Section Five, and they agreed that they will do their best to start posting even by this year. So we'll see. At babantayan naman namin that they do. But uh, if you again go to uh, the section on the phasing, nothing stops agencies to do this already. No, they can already start even if the law is not yet passed. And we actually are encouraging the agencies to start doing this, especially DPWH, even before the law is passed. And um, binasa ko sa kanila, 'yung section, uh, at the time it was still Section Four, uh, no, at the time that we read it to them, I think it was still Section Four. Uh, 'yung letter D, Infrastructure and Procurement Related Documents, and uh, Secretary Tison uh, mentioned that they're already intending to publish this even before the law is passed. So I think there are some agencies that will already start uh, the process, the ICT also as a pilot, I think, no? Uh, even before the law is passed, and um, we're hoping that agencies, agencies can already start um, making their data public. Sige, so let's leave Section Five. Um, unless wala ng iba, sige, sige, dalawa pa. Okay, uh, sir, sige po, and then si Attorney.
Mr. Chair, quick point lang po regarding dun sa.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. By the way, uh, on the point of Mr. Miss Makapagal, on the third party, there are already some uh, initiative before, like three years ago, World Bank already implemented blockchain to provide aid and assistance to, to the Philippines, Metro Manila flood control, I think. Uh, the beneficiaries DPWH, DSWD, and also LGU. So I think we should also consider third-party funders, grants, loans should be included, or they should be following certain uh, APIs to connect, so that uh, their grants and loans will be visible also into budget.
Thank you, Attorney.
Regarding dun sa SARo na may empty field, baka we can add under Section Six, Data Quality Standards, completeness, para lang ma-include lahat ng field.
Sige. Since as a Section Six ka na Attorney, uh, let Jose continue. Uh, you can continue with uh, Section Six and a few sections before we open up again.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, so Section Six ensures that all data are digitally structured and machine-readable, so that anyone from auditors to citizens can analyze them. Uh, it also aligns the usage of UACS or UACS, which allows the data from DBM, COA, and other agencies to interact seamlessly, enabling automated verification and analytics. The goal of this section is to transform the raw financial data into usable and actionable information. Uh, next slide please. Next slide, oh, sorry. So now we're at the Section Seven and Eight of uh, the bill, which is the establishment of the digital platform. So, um, CADENA will serve as the online portal where citizens can freely access, search, and download public budget data in a secure, structured, and tamper-evident format. The system uses uh, distributed ledger and secure data technologies or other technologies with a provision for regular review of three years by the National Budget Transparency and Accountability Council to keep, to keep the technology being used, updated with emerging innovations. Uh, CADENA will also link with existing systems like IFMS, ETMS, and PhilGaps through standardized APIs, creating a single interconnected plat- platform for financial data. At its core, the CADENA is designed with key features: integrity, transparency, redundancy, traceability, validation, security, interoperability, auditability, citizen feedback, and lastly, scalability. So with these uh, features in mind, CADENA wishes to transform the disclosed budget process uh, in Section Five into a digital and verifiable system.
Sige, we can open the discussion about uh, Section Seven and Eight? Yes, um, Mr. Hill, Mr. Orense? Anyone else? Uh, I'm sure marami pa dito. So si Giro, and Ann, and then si Mark, sige.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, everyone. So, Mr. Chair, just a quick clarification and suggestion. The bill defines the use of distributed technology, but not as decentralized, especially for validation, and that distinction matters. While the core features are mentioned in Section Eight, without clarity, distributed might be widely interpreted to include systems that are still centrally uh, controlled, where one administrator or group manages all the notes and can still alter or override records. If one of the intent of CADENA Act is to guarantee trust and transparency by design in disclosing full details of the budget, then the law should make decentralization explicit, so validation is shared, not controlled, and every transaction remains tamper-evident and verifiable. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm, I'm okay with that. Anyone gonna object on decentralized? Wala naman? Okay, sige, we can carry that. Uh, who else did I call? Si, uh, si Giro.
Morning, Mr. Chair. Hello, thank you. Um, I would like to recommend lang po no, to change the word from tamper-evident to tamper-proof, no? Um, kasi tamper-evident by definition, um, allows pa rin some centralization to come in as well. Dun sa ating network, no? For the benefit of those watching online, uh, tamper-evident kasi means that uh, changes can be traced, no? And audible, yes, which is the core fundamental po ng ating bill. Suggest to keep it tamper-proof, kasi, Mr. Chair, no? Kasi with the word tamper-evident talaga, it leaves some ambiguity.
Sabagay tamper, kasi, sorry, we're getting to specifics ng words, no? But tamper uh, presupposes lack of consent, di ba?
Yes, correct.
So, we want it tamper-proof, but we want evidence of changes, is, is, is what you're saying, right? Correct, di ba?
Yes, part naman nila word ng tamper-proof, Mr. Chair, yes.
Sige, we, we'll find the right language. Kasi when you say tamper, you're referring to uh, bad actors.
Uh, pagpapalit, yes, edit, changing, and.
Oh, kasi, so just for the benefit of the people online, uh, inevitably, people will make mistakes, di ba? And it's okay to correct it if you made a genuine mistake, as long as naka-detalye kung ano 'yung changes. That's tamper-evident, no? But what you're saying na tamper-proof is di siya pwedeng baguin na kung sino-sino lang, di ba? Kailangan may permission sa tama.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, and as well as kapag may, pwede mong mag-change ng data, no, in a tamper-proof environment. Uh, pero it's as, as be an append, no, uh, dun sa ating data. Ibig sabihin, it's a new uh, transaction or entry altogether.
Okay.
Kapag kasi tamper-evident, you can change the source's data, in that sense.
Okay, I, I agree with what you're saying. Let's just look for the right words, no?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So, so, ano, Ann, um, let's, let's uh, take note of that, na lang kung it comsec, kasi we want to reflect that. Uh, yes, Attorney Mark?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, exactly, correct, no? Um, to the point of Giro, so we, we take note that there's no, in this version, this is our third hearing, Mr. Chair, there's no explicit uh, mention or no explicit immutability standard, I understand. Um, to the point of uh, Giro nga, um, I, I, I took note that for us, for me, tamper-evident kasi only means changes are detectable, no? Uh, not prevented, which would allow still uh, unscrupulous administrators could still rewrite logs, or if they, and uh, if they control the core database. So, the current version, Mr. Chair, which is um, what the sections here will be, that will take a, a time for today. Um, so far, kasi we, uh, I think um, if it's not clear, if it's, there's no mention of tamper-proof or immutability, uh, it's my view, uh, Mr. Chair, that maybe we'll be back to square one, where data can still be manipulated. As you mentioned nga earlier, a law is effective if it is clear and it's cope to fight corruption, which is our goal here. Uh, I believe, Mr. Chair, and the VCP will, uh, just speak for myself, that to realize this, uh, the bill must avoid vague, in my view, with due respect, vague definitions of technology like digital platform or database. That's why we were able to get the, the support of the public, right? Because you were able to share with the public that as of today, that, that technology that is available to fight corruption is blockchain, right? So I guess that's where we have to discuss or debate about this, uh, Mr. Chair, because like terms like digital platform, data, digital, or database may be too broad. Um, in my view, it can even be, the expert, tech experts here can um, can, can, uh, can verify further. Bakit could even, you can even like say that you could just use uh, basic spreadsheets to do all of these, no, Mr. Chair? Um, uh, to, to support also Giro's point, we propose that the law mandate an append-only, cryptographically verifiable ledger, ensuring immutability of all transactions and versions. So, as mentioned, append-only is add-only to the record. Uh, so that, of course, that would be one of the key features of uh, blockchain. So uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so this prevents uh, post facto data manipulation, which is a common concealment tactic in graph cases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Um, we, we, we'll need your suggestions on writing para specific siya. But um, one thing that uh, we want to be clear is that uh, we're not legislating technology. We're legislating standards, no? And then um, we leave it to the implementors, when it's time for them to decide on the technology, to decide based on the standards in the law. So one, one case, kasi here is the Cleaner Act, where you outlaw incinerators. So in the nineties, we actually outlawed a technology, without knowing that the technology caught up. And now other countries, no, countries we visit like Tokyo and Singapore, Japan and Tokyo, they're actually using that technology already with uh, practically zero emissions, or emissions that fit the standards. Or even during the time that the um, GT modernization law was being done, uh, DOTR at the time was mandating particular engines, rather than mandating standards, no? So once you mandate a technology, it's really uh, difficult, no? And in fact, it's, it's, it's not the right legislation. So the first version actually mandated legislation, uh, mandated the technology, which we corrected. So now we talk about the standards, but you're correct, dapat rin 'yung standards malinaw. So we will be clear with the standards, but we will stop short of mandating a technology to make sure that the law can last for twenty-five to fifty years, or even one hundred years, no? Because technologies will change. But I do understand that um, the, the, the idea of this law really started with understanding blockchain further. And that was my experience naman when I had my fellowship in the US, nung inaalal ko rin 'yung blockchain. So uh, uh, of course, these days, we have different groups saying, oh, we have this technology which is similar to blockchain, but not exactly blockchain. Um, we leave that to the implementors already to decide, no? Because um, uh, my understanding is that people in the ICT are more well-versed than us with regard to these technologies. And I know that that's a bone of contention for many groups here, pero I am insisting that we keep all the processes transparent. At di namin to papakawalan, anyway, we have oversight function on uh, with regard to the bill. We'll make sure that the best technology at the best price is the one that's utilized for our people, no? So uh, we'll request um, Attorney Mark the suggestion on paper, so we can also compare it side by side with other suggestions. Thank you. Sige, we'll have Ann, and then si Paul.
Mr. Chair, thank you. And we hundred percent agree to the principles that you just laid out, that this bill should be um, technology-neutral. And we need to lay down all the principles, and I think the Section Eight captures all these principles of immutability, that data integrity, the oversight, the mirror databases. Those are principles that would be good and that would best fit how we can process the data flow of the budget without um, these insertions, without following actually what happens and, and the entire, to the entire flow of this cycle. And we just want to add, Mr. Chair, uh, to the point of, I think it was mentioned awala ago by Prof. Thotin, no, inad lang namin 'yung outcome-based ma- metrics. Because after getting all of these data, what do we do? We do not make the citizens go on one-on-one on each website. But in the CADENA platform, as a digital platform that invites any type of technology, whether that's blockchain, API, uh, AI technologies, that would be, it's, it's a catch basin for all technologies, and the, the digital platform of CADENA uh, platform. But there would be an outcome-based met- metric, so that the citizens will easily see how these funds flow and dispersed to, down to the contracts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Um, sino pa 'yung mga nagkas ng kamay? We have, uh, sige, Sir Arman. Uh, ah, yeah, Paul, sorry. Paul first, then si Sir Arman.
Uh, Mr. Chair, uh, I, I think we, we should have a provision in the bill that, you know, all of these processes, it must be a protocol, rather than a standard, meaning more advanced, di ba? Or more higher. Kasi we need to make sure that there's a minimal human intervention on what we're doing. Because that's where technically the problem always, you know, doing workaround and all. But if we put everything in the code, you know, as there are triggers, audits, there are uh, time, time-based, uh, you know, uh, triggers, et cetera. So if, if the, if the code or the protocol was defined on the bill, then when we do the IRR, may sinusundan po tayo kung anong kailangan ilagay sa program. Kasi later on, when specific vendor, or kung sino man po 'yung gagawa, even the ICT, they need to really follow uh, some specific protocol already.
You're, you're referring to protocol as a technical term, di ba? Or?
A technical and uh, also standard, no? So um, it can, so you can, you can write a code with a specific, oh, what does it do? Na-defined, na-defined. Pero technically, in a logic perspective, susundin po niya talaga.
Okay.
Kung ano 'yung step-by-step na ginagawa.
Sige, let me request Paul, if you can write that down. What you mean exactly na protocol? Uh, if it's the logic, I mean, parang what should it do? Uh, what should the output be?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
I think we'd really try to put it here, but baka you can help us with language also.
Thank you.
We will welcome that. Arman?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I think on looking at the principles, um, to enhance the immutability and transparency, I think we missed to mention consensus. If there are consensus among, among the, the nodes or the agency, definitely we'll be able to limit some of those um, uh, disparity or anomalies in the databases or, or the ledger.
Is consensus a technical term? Yes, no?
Yes.
What, what, ni siya, yeah, what do you mean exactly by consensus?
So, be- because if, if one of the nodes doesn't agree, then it will not be a part of the data. The data or the, the ledger will not be updated. So again, we are promoting immutability, that's one. Uh, I'm just checking on the principles, kasi you've mentioned about transparency, immutability. And the other thing that will enhance is consensus that everybody agrees. For example, the smart contract says that we will only consum- uh, consummate the transaction if everybody agrees that this is not an insertion. So then the, the data will be updated, because it's validated that it's not an insertion. And I think that's one, one point on the consensus. The other point that I, I'm looking at is the digital shadowing. Because we're talking about digital data, but, but what about the physical budget? Where is it now? There should be some points in the process that there will be some checkpoints where in, the digital data says that we still have hundred million. How are we going to check the physical one or the fiat, that there's still a hundred million? So in, in our, in our experience in implementing blockchain in VFM or public financial management, we always make sure that there's a digital shadowing, so that at any checkpoint, there will be KPI and metrics that the digital uh, data is equivalent to the physical, uh, let's say, projects or budget. So I think that's one of the things that you want to stress.
So there were two things, no? Si consensus, tsaka si digital shadowing. Um, we didn't go into smart contracts here, uh, Sir Arman, because uh, primarily, we want this to be a, a platform for information. No, hindi pa siya, um, triggers for actions, no? We, we didn't go there, kasi I also feel that if we do that, it'll take longer to make. You know, and, and I wanna get this out uh, as soon as we can, no? But that doesn't stop us from building on it a year from now, or two years from now, when uh, CADENA is up and running already, or even from the agencies to build on it even without the law, di ba? I mean, that's possible. Um, sige, 'yung consensus po, I, I'll need lang maybe further support in terms of what you mean and the definition of consensus. I think when you talk about consensus, you mean it as a technical term, consensus among the nodes, di ba? Uh, so if you can just submit that to us, and then 'yung um, digital shadowing, yes, I see that that's important, kasi baka 'yung nakita nung publiko, iba 'yung numero, iba na 'yung numero ng treasury, di ba? Um, sige, we'll, we'll, we'll try to see how we can, ano, how we can um, look for a solution there, or baka may mga ano tayo, every X months na to check. Um, although to be honest, we don't have the treasury data here, no? Treasury data is not here. Uh, all we have is disbursement data, no? So can you kindly write that out na lang, Sir Arman, no? So we can consider that. Uh, yes, uh, AJ, and then, okay, and then si Hill.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, um, I feel out of.
So, um, I feel out of my depth, uh, responding to the technical, technical concerns. I'm here as a budget watchdog, so the end user talaga. Um, I would just like to express, um, maybe a little bit concern. I think, um, in general, we really do want to be tech-neutral. So I might disagree with, with some that we might have to specify the specific protocols talaga, or, uh, that the...
We, we can disagree with each other here. Okay lang naman ha? Don't, uh, don't, uh, don't hesitate, kasi we're discussing it, no? Yun ang discussion.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. In fact, um, my initial reading is that 'yung, 'yung term na digital public ledger system might be too specific rather than too broad pa nga. Parang, um, an open system might be better. Uh, in fact, parang reading, a digital open system might be better. Reading some of these, I feel like some of the aspects here might, um, de facto lock us into blockchain. Is there an alternative that meets these standards that is not blockchain? Because until, parang, everything that I've heard so far, it seems like blockchain is the only technology that meets these standards right now. So until I hear that there is other technology that might meet these standards, it feels like we're locking into blockchain.
So, question, why, why not? Considering that that's the gold standard right now for securing, uh, documents, decentralized, uh, so question is why not?
I think, uh, so again, I'm not a, I'm not a tech person. I, I'm coming from more, uh, policy background. I think it's very difficult to legislate specific technologies like this. Uh, technology moves faster than legislation, so, uh, I, we're just hesitant. Um, we're not close to the idea, I think, but we're just hesitant that if we lock it into this technology, it might favor, uh, certain industry interest, it might favor, you know, the market dynamics, for example, rather than 'yung end user, which is the budget watchdogs, na yun talaga 'yung, 'yung proponent dapat nang measure.
You're, you're not the end user, huh? The end user is the citizen. So you're here to support the citizens?
Yes.
With regard to understanding the budget better?
Correct.
So our end users are the citizens?
Yes.
So just to be clear?
Yes.
But the heaviest user will probably be the budget watchdogs, the academy, media, no? Um, other, uh, other policymaking offices. So, I, I guess the question is, I know that there's hesitation, but if that is a technology that fits the standard, why are we afraid to, uh, use that technology? Especially if right now, that seems to be the best possible technology right now. Now, um, we're keeping it technology-neutral because we understand in a year from now or two years from now, it may not be the best anymore, or it may not be the gold standard anymore. But, uh, currently, uh, that seems to fit the bill in terms of what we want to see, no? But then again, we opened it up to other people to participate, to see what will actually fit the bill. Now, uh, question ko is the standards. Are, is there anything in the standard that you feel is contravening to our purposes, diba? Now, sabiin nila, um, it's secure, we want secure, it's, uh, decentralized. Ako, I personally, I would prefer decentralized over centralized. Kasi centralized kaya mong, kaya mong baguhin, no? In fact, uh, one concern there was, uh, will government hold all of the nodes? And I said, no, we want the private sector to also hold some of the nodes. Schools can hold it, media, even, uh, P P C can hold one of the nodes, so decentralized, okay rin siya. So let's look at the standards. Ano 'yung mga standards na, uh, sa tingin mo, hindi okay, diba? Now, if the standards are okay and we all agree on the standards, then we'll allow the implementer to choose, uh, which technology is best. Now, I understand that, um, a lot, a number of our watchdogs and a number of our citizens aren't well-versed in blockchain. Naintunan ko yan, but it's not new. Blockchain is, and how many years ng blockchain? But itong, itong, the, the upswing of blockchain is what, the last ten years, fifteen years? Um, ano ba, 'yung ano, Cadena is blockchain, right, diba? When, when was blockchain actually, uh, when did it get into the consciousness? Oh, Paul?
So just to, for the public, kasi this is a public hearing. So, the blockchain is just a terminology, no? It was, you know, when Bitcoin was starting. In fact, the blockchain has a space, not one word, uh, when you see the Satoshi paper, it's really like that. But you know, media coined it blockchain as one word. Pero the D, D L D itself, the digital ledger, uh, technology, it's been there since the nineties, no? In fact, blockchain is not, D L D, uh, blockchain is only part of D L D. It's not the all-in-all of D L D. We have D A G, directed acrylic graph, we have hash graph, et cetera. So there's a lot of technology that technically proposes the same. Uh, it, blockchain became hot lang talaga because of Bitcoin or whatever you're saying. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, um, uh, who can I ask here? Uh, Ann or Dr. Al? Uh, sige, Ann, go ahead. Baka you'd like to give a comment on what, uh, A J had mentioned then?
Uh, to the comment of A J, um, I, I agree with the, actually, we proposed the revision of the title or the description to remove the distributed, uh, digital, uh, public ledger, because it's limiting, the ledger is limiting. And, and suggested the digital platform, because the ten, uh, features of the digital platform Cadena already addresses the, all of the standards and the principles of what we want to do to shed light on the budget cycle. To the point, a while ago, um, on the consensus, there's already the, uh, this phrase of, uh, no, sorry, the redundancy and oversight. So that, that already addresses. On the protocol, there's programmability. I think because this was sent to us at evening of yesterday, probably hindi lang po nakita ng mga iba natin, na nakal- nakalista lahat very thoroughly 'yung ginawa po ng inyong opisina, um, Sir Chair, on laying down all of these principles. Nag-iiba lang 'yung mga semantics, but actually, it addresses the standards that we want to be able to achieve the goal of shedding light to the budget cycle.
Uh, thank you, Ann, but, uh, I want to get your opinion on what A J mentioned, no? Uh, right now, may mga standards tayo. Um, and, uh, I think there's consensus on the standards, diba? Um, the technology that best addresses these standards right now, what are the technologies that best addresses the standards right now? And may I ask you, Sektebo, so, sige, Ann?
So, for now, um, it, it's a combination of not just blockchain, uh, to be able to shed light and make meaning or make sense out of the data that we will, uh, be able to extract from the disclosures of different agencies. It will require other things, kasi if you just say, okay, blockchain lang, so what now? What if nilagay lang natin 'yung data, how do you make meaning? How do you shed lau- light and monitor the cycle? It will require interoperability, A P Is, A I. So kaya po sinasabi namin, gawin siyang digital platform that allows all of these combinations of technology. Pagsiabi po kasi nating immutability, it's not unique to blockchain. There would be other technologies like EmuDB, Desira, and others that can address that. Para po lang magiging, um, hindi tayo malimit dun sa ledgerying system only.
Uh, currently, nothing in the law limits rin naman to blockchain. But my question is, um, but definitely, the standards that we go on, it does, also, like blockchain does allow for these standards to be met?
Yes.
Diba? So, today, uh, maybe not three years from now or five years from now. Um, so I, I guess that, that's my concern is. So parang, uh, there was some concern about blockchain in general, but maybe there's a misunderstanding about blockchain, maybe because it's closely related to, uh, crypto. Maybe that's where some of the concerns come in. But if you really look at it, you can separate the crypt. In fact, we didn't talk about tokenization here, we didn't talk about, um, having stable coins. We're not putting the budget, uh, D O F, we're not putting it on, uh, Bitcoin or anything like that, no? We're not, no? So maybe that's where some of the concern comes from, or maybe some of the concern comes from a lack of understanding then of the technology itself. So clearly, I think, right now, we're allowing for different technologies to come in. Pero, uh, kapag nagpresent na yan, the different groups would present their suggestions to the I C T, the best of the best will have to come out. And right now, the technology that fits a lot of this seems to be leaning towards some aspect of blockchain. Is that fair to say, ano? Yes, sige, Yusek Dave, can you shed light on this also?
Yes, Mr. Chair, uh, I think, uh, a lot of words here. In the past, if you, maybe fifteen or ten years ago, if you mentioned the word digital ledgerying, it, it will lead to a certain technology. But these are becoming already a general word eh. So when you mention the word digital ledgerying, it's no longer, you know, focus on a certain technology. So we can use digital ledgerying, everyone is actually using that now. Even the small companies, they have their own ways of doing digital ledgerying. I think it's, uh, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair is very correct that since we are decentralizing this, since we are implementing a hyper ledger, which is one of the concept of blockchain. So once you already have the nodes later on, if D B M has it, the I C T has it, K O W A has it, once you enter data to their digital ledgerying, automatically, the other nodes will immediately, immediately see it, diba? So I think wala nang mangayaring, ano eh, 'yung worry na baka alter, baka, baka ibago, baka i-reprogram. Wala, ma- ma- mawalan na po yon, and that's the concept of blockchain technology. My, my humble suggestion po para, since the, 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 the beautiful law is already, you know, as I mentioned multiple times, that I think we are overthinking on the technicalities of this. The simplicity of the law is very, is very, ano eh, very, very nice eh, very, it's so beautiful where people really love this. Because we are here to create a, a transparency digital portal where people can now not only see the budget, but they can see even the movement and the statuses of this budget moving forward. Whatever technology we'll be using later on, that's why I wa- I was insis- insisting that we can discuss this in the I R R side. Kasi there are technicalities that we could resolve on the I R R eh, but in, in the law, per se, the, the generic way of making the, ano, for me na nga, ang ganda ng ano, ano eh, ng, ng, ng latest bill eh. Hindi na ako pupok, tinatanim masyado na, kasi nakita ko 'yung bill, napaka generic na po siya eh. So in a way po siguro, sa mga technicalities, may I humbly request po sa mga tech po dito na we can discuss that po sa, ano po, sa I R R. Thank you.
Uh, Yusek Dave, uh, I, I know that you're also a proponent of, of blockchain technology, diba? But baka ang namimissunder sa mga tao, na isang kumpanya lang yun nagpapatupad ng blockchain sa Pilipinas. How many companies are, I mean, you have Traktion here, you have, uh, Bayani Chain here, si Blockchain Council. I'm sure it's multiple companies who are implementing blockchain, even S G V has an aspect of blockchain. The World Bank is doing blockchain. How many companies are actually doing blockchain in, in the Philippines?
Actually, Mr. Chair, ang ganda po ng first suggestion niyo po, if you want, let's make it like a consortium, you know? If you would like us to help the government, combine your, each other's expertise and, ano, and, and powers to make this happen, diba? Siguro baka nakakaroon ng tama po 'yung ano, baka po, there's a competition between vendors or ano. I think if this is selfless law eh, that this will really heal the Philippines, no? Uh, for me, ah, as, as a citizen also, no? I think let's focus on that perspective, that's why let's not act like a vendor perspective here. Kung pwede nga lang, pagtulong-tulungan na lang natin na walang gasas ang gobyerno, why not do it na lang, diba? So, para sa akin po siguro, let's focus on the intention of the law, which is just to create a real transparency system, the budget, the statuses, the movement of the money, hanggan po ma-release at maverify kung totoo, hindi, let's focus on that po. And the technicalities po, we could, we could discuss that po later on.
Let's, let me, uh, go back lang to my question. Kasi I know online, eh, nakita namin may mga concerns o baka kasi ibig sabihin to, may isang grupong gagawa nito, diba? But technically, how many companies are in the Philippines, uh, that are using blockchain? Nilang naman to isa, diba? O dalawa, right?
Napakadami po to, Mr. Chair. Actually, pati po 'yung mga individual companies, they are also implementing their own private blockchain nowadays, like banks, they're doing that, financial inclusion, uh, companies, they're also doing their own blockchain. Hindi na po bago po, ano, hindi na po, itong creating an immutable data with hyper-ledgerying system. Hindi na po to bago, to maraming gumagawa. So, hindi po, wala pong lock-in actually, in a certain vendor po itong ano. Itong, in fact nga, 'yung suggestion ko nga, para wala, mawala 'yung agam-agam natin na, oh, baka naman merong nire-ready diyan, na ano, na specific company na gagawa nito, siya ang kikita and the like. At hinapakaganda po siguro pong mag-consortium, at, uh, para sabay-sabay po na magtulong-tulong.
Gambag-gambag tayo, no? Para magawa natin to, Yusek Dave?
Opo, maganda po siguro, Mr. Chair.
Okay, uh, Dr. Villarika?
I, I think Gail, Gail wanted to first.
Okay, sure. Ladies first, though. Yes, Gail?
Thank you. Mr. Chair, Your Honor, we have a Philippine blockchain report that we released. And based on that, we have roughly one hundred thirty-two to one hundred forty-five companies in the Philippines that does blockchain. So, if you need a copy, we can provide that to you. Thank you, everyone.
Iwa, Gail. Yes, Dr. Villarika?
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chair. So I just wanted to mention, so, so Gail mentioned there's over a hundred people or companies that are using blockchain. So I guess we have to also distinguish the difference between those who are using it and those who are building it. So I think there's probably a handful of them, but I think one of the important things to, to note is that the open source nature of this blockchain, so you can, you can download blockchain, I think. See, Yusek Dave talked about Hyperledger, which is an I B M slash Oracle thing. So you can download these things, you can customize them, uh, to build whatever we need to build for this particular Cadena Act.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Villarika, let me ask your opinion, no? So right now, if you look at the standards, um, are they enough to describe what we want?
Uh, yes, I think it's, we have enough of the standard here to describe exactly what we want to implement for this.
And what we're describing is not locked to a particular group or a particular vendor, correct, no?
Correct.
Okay, it is general enough that many groups can participate?
Yes, definitely.
Yes, but it is specific that we know what we want? By the way, that is the, that is the, the joy and difficulty of legislation. Kailangan hahanapin mo talaga 'yung tamang balanse, no? So I think, A J, 'yung concerns, uh, are addressed by the language, first and foremost. And secondly, uh, kung magka-consortium, why not? Why not, diba? In fact, that would be, I think that would be great, and a transparent process for everyone to participate. Um, and third, babantayan natin to. Hindi tayo papayag na biglaan na lang tong pagkapasan ng batas eh, makakalimutan natin. Babantayan talaga natin to. And in fact, later on, in section, I think seventeen or eighteen, there's an oversight, uh, group, which includes the Chairman of Science and Technology as part of that oversight group. So we can make sure that we're exercising oversight in the implementation of that, no? Okay, sige, um, can we go to section nine? Ito alam ko this might also be, uh, there, there's some discussion on, on this, so go ahead, uh, Jose. Data sovereignty and custodianship.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this section affirms that all fiscal data generated under Cadena belong to the Filipino people. That the I C T will act as the primary custodian, ensuring access, data integrity, and long-term preservation of the data. Uh, this also means that all data hosting infrastructure must be located within the Philippines, ensuring full domestic control once the system is fully implemented. So that it's, that's between, uh, one to three years. And, uh, finally, uh, third-party providers may support initial deployment, and they must comply with the Philippine data protection laws, maintain access logs, and guarantee data portability and interoperability.
Okay, um, any, or opening this up for discussion on data sovereignty and hosting? Um, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, uh, but see, Yusek, Dave, and I, and, uh, Chek Hendrin, I also spoke about this. Right now, kasi, we only have basically one government node, uh, correct, no, Yusek Dave?
The first node was, ito po 'yung digital national ID natin, we have the first node. We don't have yet the full blockchain, since we only have one node. Uh, our digital national ID, we have ninety million now, so sitting in one node now sa the I C T, isa lang po yon. So, hindi po ito applicable po dito po sa ginagawa natin, Mr. Chair. Kasi each time that we implement a certain use case, sa ating, uh, liba, the use case is to make the budget transparent and, ano, and, uh, traceable and the like, we need to create later on another schema for this. So kailangan po natin po nga, i align po 'yung node later on for a certain schema.
So, uh, and since you've read the law, you know, the bill, you know that there's phase one, two, and three, diba? Um, my goal is that by phase three, is that we will have multiple nodes in the Philippines and multiple government and private sector nodes that can host, um, host Cadena. But right now, it's just that we don't have that, correct, right?
We don't have that, Mr. Chair, but the one that we're, we've done now, sa the I C T, pati po sa D B M, I spoke also to you, to Yusek Sasa. We're already aligning, iba po, hindi pa po mapasam, Mr. Chair, pero ina-align na po namin ngayon 'yung mga initial po na nagawa po natin for this, Mr. Chair.
So, i- if you look at the phasing, phase one, actually technically, is not on the blockchain, it's just really disclosure. Phase two and three, uh, uh, which, at least from what we imagine, is maybe twenty-twenty-seven na to. So hopefully, by that time, makahabol na 'yung mga nodes natin. We'll have more volunteers to put up nodes, maybe from schools and from media companies and, uh, institutions. So we're hoping that, so tumata ya tayo na by the time this is fully implemented, we would have enough nodes to host this. So that, that's basically it, with understanding that right now, there may not be enough nodes, and without prejudice to different groups, uh, doing their own pilots, um, uh, even if um, uh, even if the nodes aren't enough right now in the Philippines. Is that the, is that the correct assessment? You, you can, ano, please, uh, disagree with me if you want. Attorney Mark, you wanted to erase your hand, or sorry, Yusak Dave, and then Attorney Mark.
Mister Chair, wala pong problema 'yung nodes po, ano, it's not, it's not hard actually to build nodes. So I think it's just about creating the, uh, the schema that will be integrated to multiple nodes later on. So mag-uusap-usap po yan, Mister Chair eh. So just to, to, to give you, um, also a little bit of smile, Mister Chair, nagsumuna po kami ni D B M. So we're already conducted already and building our own nodes now. So D B M will have their own node, the D I C T will have their own node. So that every time that they enter data here, automatic, nakamiror dito sa another node. So in the future, kapag 'yung gustong gumawa, sumali, let's say the private sector would like to come in, oh, may node din kami. Nasabihin nung another private sector, nakaka- kaya din namin yan, or telco, or mga hospital and the like. So all you need to do is align with the schema of the node na meron. Idi-disclose po yon, naka-open source po yon. Once po naalign po 'yung node po nila doon, they can now integrate with the chain. So once po they have the nodes already, they can actually create and be part of the chain later on. So pwede po yon, Mister Chair, hindi po problema, Mister Chair, ang pagbi-build ng node. Kaya po natin pong mabilisan na gumawa ng mga nodes natin. Align lang dapat dyan sa iskima at use case na patutunguhan natin. For this moment, Mister Chair, napakaklaro po, no? Napakaklaro po itong, kailangan lang natin po dito, it's just the budget. So hindi po mahirap po na gawin agad-agad 'yung iskima for this, Mister Chair.
Ano yan, Yusak eh, that's where tech and legislation, uh, differ, diba? Kasi you're saying madali lang, but the truth is wala pa, diba? So, uh, when we legislate this, uh, I'm giving it a timeframe, no? Of course, if it can be done earlier, mas maganda. But, um, that's why if you notice, phase one, which is basically good for a year, is not yet on the blockchain, it doesn't refer to nodes yet, it's just disclosure. Uh, yun pa lang actually, malaking bagay na yan, and it's interoperable, diba? So I'm hoping that maybe by the end of next year, nilang D B M and the I C T may node, other groups who may be listening to us might volunteer to put up nodes. Like I could imagine, uh, U P N C PAG, Ateneo School of Government, uh, G M A Seven, A P S C P, also wanting to have their nodes where all of this information is available, uh, to the public and it's decentralized, para hindi siya mababago ng basta-basta. Uh, sige po, wala pa Attorney Mark, si Prof Totti, then si Ian.
Uh, Mister Chair, my, my, I wanted to raise a point, not, not about the data nodes, but, uh, siguro to put on record lang, or in the minutes of the possible, um, recognition of this concept called Data Embassy, Mister Chair, which was actually raised by the D B M during the second hearing, uh, several weeks ago, so.
The D W G.
Oh yeah, sorry, um, D W G hearing, Mister Chair, I'm sorry about that. So with, uh, on recor- uh, for the record now, Mister Chair, uh, we're, we're proposing that we, for the file, especially for the file pilot phase, we coordinate with third-party providers and home state for the hosting of, for, for the hosting infrastructure, for the pilot phase to recognize digital embassies. So, um, for the public, uh, Data Embassy is a server location outside the Philippines under Philippine control for data backup and critical services, ensuring the digital continuity and security of the fiscal data covered by the, by this act. So this ensures also data sovereignty and custodianship, Mister Chair, from day one, so, uh, for the record.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, anyone, um, objecting to the concept of digital embassies? Because, uh, originally, I, I know that a number of groups, parang were pushing that all the hosting should be done geographically within the Philippines. But, uh, again, uh, we're free to, we're having a discussion, it's a hearing, we're supposed to disagree if you want. Um, the concept of a digital embassy, meaning the hosting is abroad but controlled by the Philippines. Uh, yes, Yusak Dave?
This is first node of the digital, like G Cash Maya, as long as ito, I, they can have their own node. So that network of node can actually abuse, like 'yung nakalaan po dun.
And kasi I just wanna get a clear, and we're talking here of the, or embassy, so just the other technical aspects to estimate how much, uh, information.
Hindi talaga siya ganun marami, this one, ah, wha-? Full node as well, and we have light nodes, right? So I think, uh, Mister Chair, this is okay, but we just need to define what are we talking about? Doesn't matter, kasi in blockchain, it's not really. Po ng, ng tao.
Uh, discussing and talking about. Like for example, I'm, work well with. Ang tanong po right now, kasi is where the data is, but no one is really objecting to that, the private sector. Section twelve is the implementation timeline now. Lang, sabi nga ni Miss Mary Lou, but the work of procurement, it's already unintegri- which I think are real, um, sections, the contractors are. We will know what projects are being done and not being. Um, the penalty is six years and one day to fit.
Nagitan niyo 'yung history po talaga, nung paano naconceptualize 'yung tinatawag ng distributed ledger, na naging blockchain po.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Thank you, Attorney, um. Uh, request ko lang is your position paper, please refer to the provisions. Uh, meaning mag-direct suggestions na kayo rather than, uh, a position paper, kasi nebelus na nga 'yung concept, baka nebelus dun 'yung position paper ninyo, so.
Yes, Your Honor, because baka surpo tayo talihin nung sa interpolation.
Oo, and, um, I appreciate the perspective on the litigation. So thank you for, for that, no? Kasi we didn't have that, uh, really in mind when we crafted the law, so that input would be very important, no? Salamat. Okay, si Anne, nag-request, please. So Anne, quickly na lang, thank you.
One minute, a support statement, uh, Your Honor, Mister Chair. Transparency is the strongest antidote to corruption. Kaya napakaganda po ng bill na inahing po ninyo, uh, this morning. Bawat pisong galing sa buwis ng taong bayan ay dapat nasusundan, mula sa pagkakalaan nito, sa budget, hanggang sa huling disbursement. Pero 'yung totoo, marami pa ring informasyon tungkol sa pagkasas ang gobyerno ang hiwa-hiwalay. Dahil dito, nagkakaroon ng kalabuan, maling paggamit ng pondo, at iba pa. Sa huli, Mister Chair, ang Cadenas Act na inain niyo po, ay magbibigay doobdaan sa unang real-time citizen verifiable budget transparency system sa bansa. Hindi lang ito tungkol sa data, ito ay tungkol sa tiwala. Tiwala ng taong bayan na ang pera ng bayan ay ginagamit sa tama, at may saysay sa bawat pisong ginagastos. Para sa ating mga mamabatas, we are challenging you to make things right. Kung gusto nating maitama ang maliig sa gobyerno, ipasapu natin ang Cadenas Act. Maraming salamat po.
Thank you, Anne. I'd like to thank everyone for attending today. Maraming salamat. Thank you for all of your inputs. Uh, sa mga tao pong nanonood, alam niyo po, hindi lang ito, hindi lang during the hearings nagtatrabaho 'yung mga tao. Everyone is, um, helping the D W G, providing position papers, uh, nagtatawag, nagse-send na mga dokumento. We'd like to thank everyone. Uh, alam niyo po, ang Cadenas Act, no? For me, nagsisimula talaga to sa, um, sa F O I, sa Freedom of Information, no? Matagal lang pong sinusulong yan. In fact, even as we speak, merong F O I bill na nakahain ngayon sa Senado. But the F O I bill, which basically mandated agencies to respond when query. Pagtiyatanong, kailangan magrresponde, at some point, naging full disclosure bill po yon. Kung saan sana 'yung mga ahensya, malaya na lang na magbibigay ng kanilang dato sa publiko. Yung, uh, konsepto pong yon, 'yung full disclosure, naging blockchain the budget, na 'yung unang version po natin. At ngayon po na marami na po nagkomento, si blockchain the budget, ngayon po, eh, Cadenas Act na 'yung tawag natin, no? So nagbabago po 'yung versions na hinahanap po natin, pero iisa pa rin 'yung konsepto. Na ang pera ng bayan dapat hinapangalagaan. Ang pera ng bayan hindi dapat tinanakaw, dapat napupunta sa tanga. Yung pera ng bayan, may karapatan ng bawat mamamayan na malaman kung saan napupunta 'yung perang pinaghirapan at buwis na inibigay buwan-buwan. Habang tayo'y nagbabayad ng buwis, karapatan natin na malaman kung saan napupunta 'yung pera. Yung mga investigation po dito, sa totoo lang po, 'yung punong dulot ng lahat ng yan, nangyayari 'yung korapsyon kapag walang transparency. Kapag natatago ang, ang lagay sa bill of materials, kapag naluluto 'yung mga P D, dahil 'yung mga contractor, pare-parehas lang naman. At iisang company lang, kahit eight sila magpipid, iisang tao lang pala yan. O di kaya, kung nilalabas lang 'yung mga papeles, malinaw naman na, uh, meron talagang overpricing na nangyayari. Lahat pong yan, sana matitigil o di man moabawasan, sana. Kapag 'yung mga dokumento alam ng publiko, kapag 'yung datos nandyan, nakita ng taong bayan, yan po talaga 'yung isang malaking deterrent sa korapsyon sa ating bansa. Dahil lahat na mga, ito, 'tong mga investigations, flood control, lahat pong yan, all of that could have been stopped if all of these documents were made public at may nakabantay, no? Ngayon po, ang hangarin natin sa Cadenas Act, nakakadena 'yung budget ng, ng taong bayan. Yung people's budget, nakakadena siya, nakalak siya, no? Hindi madaling, uh, uh, hindi madaling magamit ng basta-basta. It's now available with the law, when this becomes law, it will be available to the public. At hindi lang sa mga P D F na bidanggit ni Miss Mary Lou ng Inside Coke, napakahirap itindihin. Pero nasa lingwahe na kung saan kaya siyang ma-analyze, kaya siyang, uh, magamitan ng iba't-ibang teknolohiya para mas maintindihan. Sabi ko nga, nung unang hearing, pwede tayo magka-alert. Kapag merong proyekto na kung saan 'yung presyo ng bakal at presyo ng sibento mas mataas sa hardware store, eh, pwede mag-alert na kaagad. Pwede tayo gumawa ng mga programa na naka-alert kaagad yon. Naka-alert sa COA, naka-alert sa D B M, naka-alert sa mga watchdog, naka-alert sa media. As it's happening real time, malalaman ng taong bayan kung may mga overpriced na mga proyekto. Can you imagine ganung level of, uh, technology ang meron na sa ating kamay ngayon? So ako rin po, I also invite everyone, huwag tayong matakot sa teknolohiya. Gamitin natin 'yung teknolohiya para sa taong bayan. We can use the right technology, of course, at the right price, no? Yung tamang teknolohiya, sa tamang panahon, sa tamang presyo, para matugunan natin 'yung mga problema natin. Huwag tayong matakot sa teknolohiya. These technologies have been here for years. Maraming practitioner sa Pilipinas na magagaling at mabubuting tao at naganais ng maganda rin sa ating bansa. Pagsama natin 'yung tech sector na marami po nandito, 'yung mga watchdogs na marami rin po dito, akademy at mga media. Pagsama natin sila, let's all come together and propose a solution to the problems that we've been seeing in our country. And sa totoo lang, dekad-dekada na rin 'yung mga problema ng ito, we're hoping for a lasting solution. Uh, but hindi lang panghuli, gusto ko rin pong sabihin, hindi una din to papakawalan. Kumbaga, uh, if we're able to pass this law early twenty-twenty-six, napakabilis po yan. Pero kung mapasapu natin yan, hindi tayo titigil, we will make sure that we exercise oversight function to make sure that it's implemented properly, it's funded properly. And 'yung phase one, ulitin ko po, 'yung phase one, napakahalaga. Bantayan natin na mangyari 'yung phase one. Yung phase one is within nine months from the passage of the law. Nakapublish na 'yung mga dokumentong nakalista sa section five, na napakarami at dun po nilalaman 'yung mga dokumento na kung saan, uh, tinatago 'yung pagnanakaw sa ating bansa. So dyan po, napakahalaga, and kailangan natin bantayan hanggang phase one, and then phase two and phase three, dyan na po papasok ang, uh, D I C T at iba pang mga tech companies dito. Siguraduhin natin na meron tayong magandang, uh, uh, a good way to, to contain, um, the, uh, the data, in a decentralized, tamper-proof, tamper-evident, digitally verifiable, at ang mga terms na to, natutulong ko po yan sa inyo. Uh, interoperable way, na kung saan magagamit po 'yung data, uh, ng taong bayan at, at ng iba't-ibang grupo, and that's really the goal. And, you know, ako po, I'm still optimistic, if we can get this passed and implemented properly in two to three years, nakikita po natin isang malaking pagbabago pagdating sa paghawak ng pera ng bayan. And I'm happy that D B M is here, no? Uh, the I C T is here, inaunan na lang 'yung D P W H, kasi ito po talaga 'yung tawag ng panahon. This is what the people require of government, no? Na makita natin 'yung mga pagbabago, at makita natin na mas transparent talaga tayo pagdating sa perang pinaghihirapan ng mga kababayan natin. So thank you again, um, this is not the last time we will see each other. I hope you will join me when I sponsor this on November twelve. We will, of course, uh, welcome all of the suggestions, we hope.